Are we still cracking? No barking?
Dirty box cutter. Look at mine. That's what happens when you use a dull one. And I should have gotten stitches. No, I should have. I didn't. I just glued it back together.
This happened pre- pre.
I'm just like, as I was putting the root in, it was so spicy.
Okay, it's 5:00 p.m. We'll call the Georgia Oregon Board. Meeting to order Monday, May eighth, 2023. Uh, first time, uh, ask the clerk to call it off.
Fashion?
Here.
Bealow?
Here.
Mankie?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Yeah. Item three. And I'd be remiss not to welcome, uh, Jason Mankie to the board.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. A three-minute, uh, maximum per speaker will be allowed. Please, please note if you're here to speak on the, uh...
You forgot.
Oh. I did. Pardon me. Pardon me, let me back up. Item three, approval of April seventeenth, April eighteenth, village board meeting minutes. And we can approve those together.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Amanda and Carleen?
And I heard there was a typo. So what's the...
No, that's in the, uh...
That's today.
That's in the, uh... Agenda. Agenda.
Oh!
I'll, I'll point it out when we get there.
All right, sorry.
All right. Uh, all those who favor, indicate by sign and eye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, carrying on. Thank you for the correction. Item four, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. A three-minute maximum per speaker, otherwise the agenda will proceed as posted. Uh, please note there'll be a public hearing on the, uh, sidewalk assessments, and there will be a time allowed to speak during that period. So if you're here to speak on that topic, you can speak now or during that portion of the meeting. Uh, anyone here to speak? Public comments. Another...
Public comment.
So two, right?
Yep.
Okay, so Bonnie and Jerry, Theo?
Well, we have a, can we do it during the public?
Yes. Thanks.
Is that what you want to do?
And, uh, Joe Spazak? Spazak? Sorry. We have his name and address already.
The top photo shows what it looked like when public works stopped mowing for approximately one month in 2017. Please raise your hand if you believe that the top photo depicts appropriate maintenance.
I'm sorry, we can't react to what you say, sir.
Well, take it internally, please. If someone thinks this is okay, they are clearly out of touch with subdivisional societal norms. The second photo on the bottom is a real estate listing, spotlighting the exact same area. The fact that our public works director states in his mowing plan that mowing does not affect property values or the overall atmosphere of an area is a joke. It's an absolute fallacy. Phil, Derek, how can you feel good about putting your name and face on creating lots that look like this? To quote Phil himself, had a public works meeting input session this spring. Areas that are not mowed for a month do not look good. They remind me of abandoned lots in Detroit. On top of having negative impact on neighborhood desirability, we are losing out on the ever-valuable resource of usable green space. There is no reason why stormwater areas can't be multipurpose. How foolish are we for repeating history? This plan wasn't acceptable in 2017, and still not acceptable in 2023. Village homeowners and residents are supposed to be protected from situations like this. This is why there's an ordinance that clearly states that grass over twelve inches is prohibited. Village-owned entities are not exempt from village ordinances. The current mowing plan is in clear violation of the ordinance. In the meantime, while, while the mowing plan gets adjusted properly, we, the residents of High Meadows, are merely asking for permission to do it ourselves. We have a petition with 100% homeowners supporting the area to be mowed regularly. The biggest driver of the reduced mowing plan was budget and staff time. This compromise would be a win for all. The notion that there's too much liability for us to cut the grass ourselves or that there are environmental concerns with this added mowing is a stretch. or that there are environmental concerns with this added mowing is a stretch and unnecessary red tape. Instead of threatening legal action on us, how about working with us cooperatively to find a way for us to do this in a legally sound way? We will happily sign any liability waivers and procure the necessary insurance. In summary, accept our neighborhood's offer to voluntarily take care of the space. Genuinely take public input into account and fix the mowing plan so we don't repeat the blunders of two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments?
What if we already can't care for it ourselves already?
Pardon me?
We don't need your help by doing it.
Sir, if you'd like to make comment, you'll need to speak, step up to the microphone.
I'm just saying, if we...
Bob, sir, you'll need to step up to the microphone, please. Uh, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Dwayne Schlamp, two zero seven State Street. What if we take care of it ourselves already and keep it at a good-looking manner as it is right now?
I'm sorry, we, we can't respond to your, your comments really.
Well, are you, are you, are you insinuating that, uh, you want the village to take care of the lawn mowing?
Uh, I'm, I'm not clear what you're talking about. Sorry, you're talking about the sidewalk?
I think you're talking about the lawn mowing.
Mowing?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, I believe the gentleman was referring to a, a mowing in a public park.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it was a...
I'm sorry, sorry, take it personally. Apologize.
All right. Anyone else? Oh. Okay, we'll close the, uh, public comment sections. Item five, approval of altruism in the amount of one million fifty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, motion, Carleen and Amanda. Comments, questions? Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Did we make a motion in this?
Yes.
Question?
Carleen and myself, I second it.
And if I paid attention, I'm sorry. Then it's a roll call vote for this one.
I thought it was me again, so...
Yeah, it's me. It's me.
Okay.
So, Beshin?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Belo?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. I'm motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Certainly, if you have any questions or comments?
I'm paying attention now.
Thank you. That's one of us.
I'll move to approve this present.
Amanda and Derek? Any discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, report of committees, item for discussion and/or possible action. Uh, item seven A is Oregon Area Fire MS, PMS District Committee Minutes. Just for information, uh, seven B Finance and Personnel Committee Revised Employee Handbook. Um, and, um, Martin had a memo in the packet on this. Uh, we have a motion to approve, uh, recommended motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Carleen, discussion. Comments, questions, Amanda? Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just gonna say, this, this employee handbook is a culmination of a long process. And, uh, I think, uh, that the staff, uh, in, in the committee, um, did a lot of work on this and, uh, I think it's, looks in pretty good shape. So, uh, just wanted to commend the staff for all their work on putting this together.
I would ditto that, and I did have one question about, um, family medical leave. I noticed that it just says that the Village of Oregon follows the state and federal and state, neither state nor federal provide any, um, any salary or pay during family medical leave. And I just, and I was looking, and I'm sure if I had looked long enough, I would have found if there's some way that people can use sick leave or something like that. Okay, I, I thought it was probably the case. That was always the case for me when I was teaching, but wanted to just check that. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, did we, we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion. Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Seven A, I propose to restructure the police department organizational chart, eliminating detective sergeant position and then a second detective position and a second lieutenant position. Chief, did you, to comment on that?
Yeah, and just to keep it, uh, it's gotten complicated because, uh, for quite some time now, we've had about a twenty-five percent reduction in staffing, which all of you know about. We've talked about this multiple times. Uh, right now, we have three in the police academy and hopefully we'll be at a much better staffing level by the end of the year, if, knock on wood, everything works out. Um, one of the top priorities is finally getting to a two officer minimum. We've been way overdue for that. It's incredibly dangerous with, uh, only having one officer on in the village. And, uh, you know, I've expressed to you guys before, um, our domestic arrests alone, um, have skyrocketed. Having ten a month is very high for our population. Uh, and when we get a domestic, that automatically ties up any resources. So, uh, we're looking to, if, if I could have, have it happen tomorrow, that'd be great, but, uh, we're really gonna plan hard for in two thousand twenty-four adding that additional officer to finally get to that two officer minimum. And because there are so many moving pieces to this, what I did is I attached with my memo uh, what that new structure would look like. So technically, we would not be adding a, a second detective. It would be modifying that detective sergeant back down to a detective. Uh, the reason being is we, we certainly have the need for two detectives. Um, with all of the, the cases we get, the, these are the kind of cases that are your sexual assaults, child abuse, death investigations, frauds, that are, they're just very time-consuming. Uh, our detectives are utilized a lot for testifying and things like that, so there's that need there. Uh, before, a detective sergeant would oversee the one detective, but then the detective sergeant would also be the primary investigator and then would also see, oversee the school resource officer. Um, for several years now, that's been virtually impossible. I've been overseeing the SRO for the most part, um, just because the detective sergeant's plate was so full. So this restructuring was long overdue. It's going to make things far more efficient and it's gonna allow us to do more effective work in investigations. So what would happen would be one lieutenant would oversee patrol operations. The other lieutenant would oversee our more administrative type operations. Um, the big project being accreditation. That's about a three-to-four month process. Um, and it takes up right now three to four people to do that in that entire three-to-four month process. So having a lieutenant solely assigned to that, we could get that work worked on constantly, uh, to retain that status. So that's what I'm bringing forward to you to, to just make things easier to follow because again, there's a lot of moving parts with people technically not on the road yet, but, you know, when will they be on the road? Uh, the, the organizational chart here, the blue is who we have on shift right now. They, they can act as solo patrol officers. Uh, the orange are people that are currently in the academy, and I have in there the dates. So we have two, uh, who will start field training here next month. That's about a three-month timeframe. And then, um, I just recently got an email about Officer Krantz in his academy. He's at the top of his class, doing very well, uh, anticipated to start field training in, in August. Uh, the, the purple box there, that's, that would be the, where the second detective would fall and you, and you see where the lieutenant, that second lieutenant we would create would oversee investigations and the school resource officer and then obviously handle a lot of administrative duties. So I, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, and ultimately, my memo ends with, what I'm seeking from the village board right now is just approval for this structure change and then over the next year to two years, hopefully no longer than that, we can find the funding to help actually make that lieutenant real. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Carleen?
So I'm just curious, the, the second detective will come from people who are currently within the department? Will someone will, will shift into that position as others are filled? As the orange, as the orange guys become blue, guys and gals?
Correct. That, that's a great question. So right now, we're running that detective process because when we have gaps and have the ability to, well, once we get that person identified, we can send them to training here and there and start preparing that. But yeah, we will not technically put that person into that assignment until those, several of those orange boxes are no longer orange.
Okay.
You know, and we have that spot.
It's all blue over there.
Hopefully soon. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we have a recommended motion. Jason and Carleen? Any more discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion or possible action. Eight A, special assessments for State Street, Washington Street, Janesville Street, twenty twenty-three, and utility improvement projects. Excuse me. One, a presentation of preliminary assessment report. It's gonna be Lauren to come up, right? Oh, all right.
All right. So I was planning to scoot on up to where Lisa usually sits, but I didn't quite get there in time, so we'll go with this. Um, essentially, what you're seeing in your packet is the preliminary, it's the, um, it's the assessment report, including the preliminary schedule of assessments for the State Street and Washington Street reconstruction projects and the Janesville Street reconstruction project. And it includes a resolution that just authorizes us to levy these assessments. What we are levying is fifty percent of the sidewalk cost in front of each affected property. Um, there are a couple of small tweaks, um, unusual properties. Largely, these are at corners, so we are only levying one side of a corner lot. We are only levying an assessment against the longer side of those. So in some cases, you'll see an address or a parcel listed twice, and one of those will have a zero next to it. That's what's going on there. There are also a couple of lots on here. They are all also corner lots, I believe there are four of them, that have zeros against the only parcel, um, listing. Those are all on State, or I'm sorry, on South Main Street. They're corner lots on Washington and State Street and South Main. Three of those were already assessed in two thousand sixteen with the Elm Street and South Main Street project. Um, and so we are not assessing them again. The fourth is going to be assessed when we move forward with the South Main reconstruction project between State Street and South Perry Parkway. And it is definitely the long side of the property that is on that stretch that is coming forward next year. So we decided to go ahead and hold off on that one. Um, this, this report should have everything. It includes, as Jeff's showing now, basically the basis of these assessments, so how we calculated them out. They are based on actual bid unit costs. So we did have kind of estimates that we presented to the neighbors back in December as well as January. Unfortunately, the concrete costs and the crushed aggregate costs just came back a little bit higher here. So the assessments did go up from what we had estimated. It's unfortunately kind of luck or lack thereof of the draw. Um, sometimes these numbers come back high, sometimes they don't, and they did in this case. So this estimates what you would pay for five-inch sidewalk, which is essentially anything but sidewalk that is adjacent to a driveway apron, and then seven-inch sidewalk, which is anything that is in that driveway apron. And then, of course, there is the schedule of assessments that follows this that just gives the number that we're estimating each property will pay with this project. One thing to note, and it's the last thing I'll note before I open for questions, is that these are all based on estimated numbers. So at the end, we will put together final assessment values. The unit costs for those will not change. They will stay the same. Where they will differ is that it will be actual measured quantities of sidewalks instead of estimates. So our construction inspector will go out and take measurements in front of each parcel, give us those final numbers, we'll plug them in here, and that will be where that final bill comes from. In the resolution, you'll see that, um, these, these assessments are, you can pay them upfront or you can pay them over a period of up to three years with a five percent per year, um, interest rate. That's to cover both the interest associated with the borrowing as well as some administrative costs. And that's all I have.
Open the public hearing now?
Okay.
No? Any questions right now from the board?
That's pretty thorough.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. We'll open the public hearing for public comments. And we have run, one registered, uh, speaker and then others, anyone else that wants opportunity? But, uh, Bonnie Thiel and Erin Thiel? Yeah. Oh, all right.
All right, thank you. I'm Bonnie Thiel.
I'm Erin Thiel.
Yeah. Um, so when this, uh, letter came to us, which is, um, one of our questions and concerns about this, um, it, we were highly interested because there's eleven properties that relate to us. So we wanted to delve into how this was going to affect, uh, our property assessment, the, um, uh, how it might affect tenants that live in these houses with the necessity to perhaps increase rents in this time when we're trying to focus on more affordable housing. So anyway, we were very interested and we started looking through, uh, both the letter and then just today in the, um, agenda packet, the tables that are associated with it. So when we looked at this letter, which we only received one, and I thought that was curious, and it came to Netwood LLC, which is one oh four Janesville Street. But then you look at the list of properties that are included, and one oh four Janesville Street isn't on there. Uh, and then we looked at all the Gen, the Janesville Street properties, um, and they are not on there either. Uh, so we talked to neighbors, um, other business neighbors, and they were a little confused about all of this as well. So then looking into the fur, uh, further into the packet, you know, we see that there's a table on, it was on page two forty-five, which is attached to the resolution. And, uh, which lists, you know, there are, I think, eleven properties on here. Yeah, ten here. Yeah, and there, again, once again, we were a little bit confused because our property on Janesville Street is included in this table, but it's not included here. Then when you look up a little bit further into the benefited properties, uh, table, it lists, uh, homeowners, I would assume, and the addresses of the property. Although when I looked at our properties, there are only two that list the correct homeowners, so I was concerned about notice on these. You know, did people ha, not get these properly? Or how is the list of benefited properties compiled? And how was the mailing done? Can, can that be answered?
Uh, the mailing is based off the listed, uh, whoever's listed on the records that we have for the owner on that property, not the, not the tenant.
Oh, I know, of course, but I mean, it should, it shouldn't it be for the, uh, correlate to the tax bill?
Yes, it does. It should.
It doesn't?
Yeah, it was from, the list was fr, prepared, yeah, from accessing.
Yeah, sure.
Well, yeah, I'd be happy to show the details on this, but there are, I believe, nine of them on here that went to address to either people who were dead that we, you know, that we bought these properties from over five years ago, or tenants, or tenants from years ago. So I was a little concerned that maybe this happened to other people as well.
So th, those are really good questions, and I'll answer them in two parts. The first being who's actually listed. So this is something that came up today, um, and Amanda brought it up. We had discussions about it. Um, you're correct, and I will take responsibility for that. We went ahead and generated a list, and in some cases, it was really out of date. Um, what we are going to do is remove what you see now from what we post online. In fact, we already have a version that's posted on our website that takes out the name. Um, that's kind of a remnant of the way that a lot of different municipalities... That's kind of a remnant of the way that a lot of different municipalities do it, but I want to make very clear that assessments follow the property. So, it's embarrassing for us, it's embarrassing for me, that the names are out of date, but this is still assessed to that property regardless of who is listed there, and we will be changing the report that's in the packet to reflect everything just being listed as current owner.
Okay.
As, as far as the notifications, because I do want to address that, unfortunately, we do take our mailing addresses from Access Dane. We try to keep them up to date. That's why we pull them from there. In the past, the post office has really struggled. If you list something like current owner, a lot of times, we do get bounce backs on those. And that is likely what was going on here, is any time it was redacted, we tried to mail it out, and we often got that bounced back, or it just got filed away, so.
I guess since there are so many of them, at least for us, I mean, if there's eleven of them for us, I was concerned that perhaps so many other residents that are affected on here haven't received the notice. You know, but then, it doesn't, that also doesn't address, on this letter of April twenty-fourth, it lists all the properties, but some of them that are being assessed are not on there.
And you're talking about the Janesville ones in particular?
I am.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. We'll go back and take a look. I am not certain that one oh four Janesville actually is correct. So, that's something that I will go ahead and confirm with our consultants right now.
What do you mean, correct?
I need to check with our consultant that worked on these plans because we have gone back and forth as to where the limits of the project is. We need to make sure that the current limits of the project now match up. You will not be assessed for anything that is not actually done. So, everything in the resolution tonight is a definite, but I will check on those border properties and make sure that we are getting that correct.
Okay, it's questions, yeah. It, it got confusing as we went through it. The tables don't correspond, and, you know, so, so that, that was a question. I guess the, you know, the biggest question is, you know, why is this assessment happening at all? You know, are, are there not funds available that could be looked at somewhere else to help with this? And I say that because, you know, it doesn't just affect us, obviously, you know, it's a big, it's a large amount for anybody. And, you know, with the, the recent receipt of increased assessments and real estate taxes, which, you know, everybody has to understand and all that, this is a huge hit on top of it for residents.
Right, I can, I can answer a little bit about, so, special assessments are a way that municipalities do to be able, or municipalities enact to be able to help offset some of the construction costs. Many communities will actually special assess, you can go as far as actually special assessing half of the roadway, including the curb, the gutter, the sidewalks, the, the apron ramps and everything like that. I mean, legally, you can. When we did South Main Street from, what is that, Elm to State, State to Elm in twenty sixteen, we met with the village board at the time, and we kind of decided that what was fair at the time was, it wasn't really fair to, the, the board at that time, and, and I supported that, was not really felt it was fair to do curb and gutter. It was not fair to do the asphalt, and it was not fair to do the aprons. We wanted the aprons to be done one hundred percent through so it would look uniform, and if you go up that street, it looks really nice. But, we did feel that the sidewalk should be special assessed, but we also looked at that as being a significant cost to homeowners. So, at the time, we proposed that the policy going forward would be fifty percent of the sidewalk cost, and so that's just been our policy since.
And of course, you know, now with increased costs of everything, and, you know, how I said.
Concrete increase as well, yeah, absolutely.
I know, yeah, and how it interprets into and directly affects homeowners.
So, how, how would, it would be unfair to the people on South Main Street that paid their assessment, you know, in twenty sixteen, or those that have gone before that paid. We've had sidewalk assessments before, Candy. No, we did not do North Main because we did do sidewalk replacement there, but it's a common, it's a common practice, and but we felt that this was probably the minimalist way that we could enact special assessment without undo, unduly burdening residents. But you have a lot of properties. That's kind of.
Well, it's not just us.
No, I know, I understand, but I'm, I just.
It's everybody, and it's, it's a big hardship, I'm sure, for many people, that the amounts are not small.
Absolutely.
They're not small at all, and then having.
Construction costs are high.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. There's another item that comes up later in, on the agenda in regards to Lincoln Street, and there's mention on there of, what is it called?
DOT's STP urban program.
Does this, is this project working with that?
No, this is not a, no, not part of the public hearing on this, yeah.
I know that, yeah, but are those, is that a, a program that's available to, you know, assist with these kinds of costs? Because it does mention that sidewalks are being repaired under that project, or replaced, I should say.
Yeah, it's not, not under this project.
Is that something that we could apply for as a village?
We can look into it.
I know that, from what I saw on the DOT site, there's over three million dollars that are available on that.
Chances are, it would still, we would still assess probably fifty percent and, and use that STP funding probably to help make up the village cost, so we wouldn't have to borrow as much. And that's just a speculation, but, yeah.
You covered your points, Bonnie, we're, you know, trying to stay within a timeline.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, I understand that, but go ahead.
I did have a conversation with one of the utility workers, and he said the sidewalk size is going to be upgraded.
Five feet.
Five feet.
Which is a standard.
Is that going to go into the terrace? Yeah, I understand, it's now the standard sidewalk size. Is that going to be going into the terrace? Or is that going to be extending into the homeowner's yards now?
No, we can't, we can't go outside the right of way. Not without a permission.
No, I don't think so. Just, I think the point's been made that it's, it's going to be difficult for everybody. If there's another way or another avenue to look at for funding, I think it, that would go a long way too, so.
Thank you. Someone else to speak on the public hearing on the assessments? State your name and address, please.
Sarah Neillis, and I live at one one four State Street. The question is, when you're talking costs, why are we doing it now? Instead of waiting until costs drop?
Go ahead, Lauren.
Sorry about sharing the microphone to transition through.
That's an excellent question. Unfortunately, there is no guarantee that costs will drop. When I referenced the numbers that came back for this particular part of the work, these costs were relatively high based on what we've seen. The costs for other components of the project were lower, and that's how we came out with a total overall bid number that we were comfortable with, is that when we award these bids, we look at the whole project and the cost to the village. Obviously, if we were looking at a sidewalk, sidewalk assessment cost that was an order of magnitude high, that would give us pause, and we'd say, hey, now, something weird is going on here, but in this case, it wasn't swinging high enough that we were really concerned. I think bigger picture, I go back to, construction costs are really variable right now. They, they tend to be variable in general, but I certainly wouldn't bet that costs would go down next year or the year after. Unfortunately, they're charging what they can, and I think they'll continue to be able to do that, especially with a quantity of federal money that's being pumped into infrastructure right now. So, honestly, I can't swear to it, but I would guess that this is probably on the lower end of what we'll see over the next five or so years.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this topic? Okay, well, close the public hearing and move on to board comments, etc. So, we have this in front of us, the recommended motions approved as presented. We could get a motion on the table. And/or if you'd like to discuss first. Amanda?
I'll move to approve as presented, and I'll just accompany that with a comment to, because I was assessed the fifty percent fee. I live on South Main Street, so I paid this, what'd you say, twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, I mean, while the prices are higher, they're, they're not outrageously higher. I think you make a good point, Lauren. You know, they, they're, they're still within reason. To me, it's unfortunate, you know, everybody's hurting right now, and I think the board recognizes that for sure. But, you know, there are many communities who assess a hundred percent or more, and, you know, this is already sort of a compromise that we cover fifty and homeowners cover fifty of just the sidewalk, so I'm, I'm gonna have to, you know, like, approve, but that's where I'm at.
Second, Carleen?
I can second, and I also have a comment.
Please, go ahead.
Having done a lot of canvassing in the last two election cycles, I can say that these sidewalks in many places, especially these places, are long overdue for repair. I didn't fall on my face, but I almost did as I was trying to check my little boxes and move to the next door, because some places, the, you know, the frosty even, everything has the sidewalk so out of alignment that they're dangerous. So, I'm glad that it's getting done.
Jason?
And I'll just say, I, I do sympathize with homeowners. I had a similar assessment when I lived in the city of Janesville. Theirs, I believe, was seventy-five percent, and I do appreciate higher costs. Everything seems to cost more right now, but, but safety is important as well, so, so I appreciate the, the fifty percent and.
Derek?
So, as far as questions go, with the mailing of the information, what sort of timeline are we looking to have that corrected?
And I want to just be clear. Are we talking about the mailing, or are we talking about the list with the owner names?
Really both.
Okay, no, good questions. So, the list with the owner names, that's going to be almost immediate. We do already have that list generated without owner names at all. It, like I said, it is posted to the website, and we're just going to swap that out in the packet really, really quickly. The mailing, first off, I would say, unfortunately, we kind of have to figure out what happened. So, I put together that list myself, and Melissa upstairs mailed it out, which I say because I have utmost confidence in Melissa. She's really, really good. So, if something went wrong there, I suspect us on the post office side, and I'd like to reach out to them and just make sure that we know what happened here, because we're going to run into this more and more. People are taking their addresses or their names off of Access Dane, and like I said, I've had this issue with current owner in the past that they've just not sent it for whatever reason, and so I think that this probably merits a conversation because, like I said, we're going to have more of these assessments and more of these mailings, and if these are just getting lost somewhere, I don't want that to happen. I don't want this to be a surprise for folks. So, I hopefully should have an answer for you by the end of the week here, after I have those conversations, and I'll get back to you.
And as far as the resolution goes, if we were to, on item four, where it says assessments may be paid in three annual installments with interest at the rate of five percent per annum, now that, that there's a, basically a three-year payment plan is what we're offering, and just with the realization that people are financially kind of hurting right now in the community, what would, would it throw a big wrench into things to change it from three years to possibly five years?
It's a really good question for the person I'm sitting in for right now. This is pretty standard, and I know that Lisa has her reasons for preferring that number. I don't really feel comfortable speaking to it. Martin, do you want to say anything, or?
It's more of just tracking, right? So, we just have to track it over more years, if it's, if it's five or more, but honestly, I think if the board wants to do that, to offer that, I don't think there's any issue with that.
I think with the, the tracking, that, that five percent is supposed to cover the administrative costs, is it not?
About, up to two percent can cover the administrative costs. The other three percent is meant to cover the, the interest on the debt that we take on for it.
And I'd make the, I mean, if I could suggest a friendly amendment of changing the three to five-year annual just to kind of ease the, you know, give a bit more cushion to some people who may not be able to throw that lump sum down all at once. Just be my suggestion from here.
Okay, so, he's, he's proposing an amendment, and so, okay, go ahead.
So, I, I mean, I, because I'm the one who initially made the motion, I, I like the idea. I think I'd probably want to check with Lisa just to make sure that, that that's what, what's going on. I mean, or, or are you comfortable?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I've done special assessment projects in other communities, and I've gone all the way up to ten, ten years or more. So, I mean, there's, it's, it comes down to a matter of preference, and if you want to do five years, that's, I think that's a good way of balancing, tracking and giving some additional flexibility.
I'd, I'd be open to that. Can I just change my thing?
Well, you can, you can second their amendment.
Okay, I'll second your amendment.
Okay, and then discussion on the amendment.
Good idea.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Now the main motion.
I just have one other question. For those who want to make the initial, just the one lump sum payment, when, when is that due? At construction completion, or?
On their taxes.
On their taxes next year?
Yes, and it would be only after completion of construction.
Okay, so, we're back to vote on the main motion?
Yep.
And further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
It's you again, Lauren.
Eight B, review bids for the twenty twenty-three sewer televising, that sounds exciting, and real evocation project, and consider award contract to Viziu Sewer Incorporated. And, looking for a motion to approve. Amanda?
I'll, I'll move to approve, and this is the one with the.
Oh, thank you, yes. And Jason sweated in there in that the amount is actually one hundred seventy-eight thousand one forty-nine seventy-five. As we have a motion, and a second by Jason, discussion. Hearing now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Eight C, task order number twenty twenty-three dash two to agreement for professional services with Rupert Milkie Incorporated for well number six pump station design phase, it costs not to exceed seventy-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three. Recommend a motion to approve as presented. Derek and Carleen, discussion. Hearing now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Eight D, task order number twenty twenty-three dash three to agreement for professional services with Rupert Milkie Incorporated for East Lincoln Street reconstruction design at a cost not to exceed one hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and ten. Recommend a motion to approve as presented. Derek and Amanda, discussion. Hearing now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item eight E, review responses to two forty-nine North Main Street, request for proposals, and term and next steps. I guess we just have an open discussion here for a moment. Anyone want, Derek?
Yeah, I've taken the time to review all the proposals. There's a couple of them that stand out to me, but personally, the way that I kind of am looking at this right now is. There's a couple of them that stand out to me, but personally, the way that I kind of am looking at this right now is I think we need to have a full board of seven members to really fully discuss this before we move forward on it. I don't think that this is, I, I think we need to fill the vacancies before we make the final decision. And would suggest that we table this until a meeting in, likely in July. Probably the first meeting in, first or second meeting in July. Would be my suggestion. I think not only does it need to be a full board of seven people, but everyone needs to be in attendance at that meeting. I'm not necessarily comfortable, even if we have just someone randomly absent that day making that decision without the full board there.
Anybody else, Carleen?
I completely concur. I, I feel like, you know, this is, this is a big decision and one that we've had a lot of community input on, and to do it without a full board would be, I think, irresponsible.
I would agree. I, I get, I think what we're looking for a little bit more about how we might do the process, or do you have some direction for us, Martin, or?
Yeah, I think the, the timeline is great, the feedback there. But, yeah, I guess, any feedback that you want to provide in terms of how you want to run the process? And maybe you want to wait till you have a full board to, to discuss that part as well?
Amanda?
And you're thinking July, just because Barton's gonna be on vacation, right? And he should be back.
He's not a vacation.
No, he will not be a vacation.
Will be, will be gone, no, until July.
The record will show it's not a vacation. Well, it, it sounds like then that, once we get everybody back here, then we can have a further discussion about exactly how we're going to do that. Rather than decide that right now. Everybody on board with that? Any, okay, you need a motion on this, or?
Either board meeting, I mean, we'll, we'll just aim for July tenth would be the first meeting in July.
Phil?
Please.
Yeah, just to mention, maybe once we do have the full board seated, I think it'd be helpful in June, maybe at one of your meetings, just to, again, discuss the process.
Right.
Specifically, I think some of the respondents are curious if you'd like a presentation, or if you have enough information in their proposals to just kind of have a discussion, just so they know if they have something to prepare. But we can discuss that later, once the other two members are present.
Okay, thank you. Carleen?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, that, that some of us could, I mean, you know, without all of us here, we could talk about the, the way we would go about making a decision and, and maybe putting together some steps for a process. And, and maybe between now and then, we can look at when there've been things like this in other communities, how they've handled it. So there's been adequate research and, you know, process that includes the public.
Okay.
I, I'll just throw in there, if we're gonna be working on process with a full board, but Martin, paternity leave, I'd like to ask if you have any recommendations you'd, you'd have for us to take into consideration as we look at the process. I know time's short for you right now, but if you wouldn't mind sharing those, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, just initially, I think in terms of process, I think you're gonna want to, you know, have a clearer understanding as if you expect people to come and give a presentation. I think, you know, we add a, a scoring matrix in the RFP, and so I think, at least what we were playing on staff is maybe having a collective recommendation at some point later on in the process from staff. The, the scoring matrix would be the basis of that. So I think, you know, you could use that at the, the board level as well. You could have everybody fill that out and use that as a tool to help you make your decision. But I, I think beyond that, you know, I think it's, it's up to the board's preference on how it wants to proceed.
So, and I say this knowing full well that filling the village board vacancies is up next on the agenda. If we were to hypothetically appoint two board members at the, the next meeting on the twenty-second, would we also that evening be able to get presentations from whoever wanted to send a representative? Maybe a ten-minute presentation from each, or five, you know, five, ten minutes from each? Would that be a possibility at that meeting?
Sounds fast.
Might be a tight turnaround, but the other thing to think about in terms of timing for that next meeting is what you decide at the next item, and how much time that will take to, to go through. I think you could do, if you see people at the May twenty-second meeting, I think you could have representatives come and give presentations as soon as the, the June fifth meeting. I guess, like I said, it's gonna be up to you guys to decide the order of operation there.
So we had decided to wait to decide on the process until we have a full board seated? And then also have a full board seated for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I thought we just, based on what Elise said, thought we would have some process decisions made before the full board is seated. Is that right, no? Okay, I misunderstood.
And it sounds like, once the full board is seated, then we can decide on process of things that we're discussing here tonight. So it doesn't really sound like we really need to do anything except perhaps motion postpone, or, or nothing at all.
So are you, so what I have is just a table to July tenth?
Yeah.
And that's, that's what you're describing, Phil?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Yeah. That should be fine.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
So if we're tabling till July tenth, but we're talking about maybe having presentations as soon as June fifth, isn't that part of the process? So I'm confused. We're taping everything till after July tenth?
No.
Yeah, so yes, no, what, what are we doing? I'm confused.
Okay, the way I, I'm, what, the way I understood it was, is that, once we have a full board seated, which will be as soon as May twenty-second, but certainly the meeting after that, then we will discuss what we, how we would proceed. And then Martin was suggesting that they may, make presentations at the date he was talking about.
Right. So are you saying July tenth is when we'd make a decision? Is that what we're saying?
No.
Okay, so why, I don't understand July tenth then. Because why would we table it till July tenth when we're talking about it at two more meetings?
Yeah, my interpretation was, we're just waiting until July tenth to do anything related to this.
Yeah.
Okay, including discussion of the process?
I think the new board should be part of the process.
Correct, sorry if I muddied the waters there, Carleen, but my, I was throwing out just a hypothetical to Martin. But yes, I, my, my intent is not to move this necessarily forward without discussion or without a full board presence. So as far as timeline goes, I would agree.
So we're not gonna talk about this again until July tenth?
That's what I understood.
So no presentations at June fifth? Okay, got it.
Okay.
Because I'm writing these things down, and there's another date, and I'm like, okay.
So we'll have a motion to table till July tenth? Motion to postpone, which?
So I think on the July tenth village board meeting, you'll see the exact same item described on the agenda.
So then I think that a, a motion to propose until July tenth, I think, would be in order. Jason?
I move.
Thank you. Derek? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Oh, I thought that was difficult. Item F, determine procedures for filling vacancies on the village board. Martin did provide us with a, some thoughts. And I guess we can just, you know, open it for discussion. Jason?
Well, one challenge I see, from what I understand, eh, eh, previous boards filling vacancies, I believe was only one. They'd come in one at a time and be interviewed. The challenge I see with Martin's point, that the person who is, if we appoint someone, they're immediately on the board and won't have necessarily heard the other interviews. So is it possible to determine two at once? And, so that way, we, we don't get into that difficulty?
Martin and I had a lengthy discussion about this. And unfortunately, the statute says the minute they're voted in, they're seated. And we've kind of danced around that thought, when we just vote for two at once.
Possibility.
Are you comfortable with that?
You could have a, you could do one motion during a joint appointment.
So you'd have a rolling vote.
So kind of ha, come to a consensus on one, and then move on to the second without approving the first?
Well, I think what you would do, what I might suggest is, you would have a nomination of more, one or more. You'd vote, and the first person to get majority is the first vacancy. Second person to get a majority is the second, second one. And then after that, you would seat them both. Now, that's my interpretation, I'm willing to listen to other ideas. Amanda?
Okay, so I had a kind of a different idea of how that might happen.
Sure.
Generally, we have a lot of discussion before we make any motions.
Right.
So, you know, we, we could do a bigger discussion on it without a motion on the table and just, you know, oh, I like this person and this person, right? And, and see where everybody else is at. And we may have agreement on two people right away, and then we can do a single motion approving both people. Or we can discuss it until we have kind of a consensus on two, and then we make the motion and we pass it. We just, we just do it with two people at once. So the motion itself is two, but we can discuss before then till we get to those, two people narrowed down.
My concern about that is that one trustee may want to nominate one of those persons, and one trustee may, may like both those, and, and others may not. So you really would need to do, I think, separately.
Then you just, you know, they can vote against it. If there's one person that they absolutely didn't want, they could do a, a no vote. But the point of the discussion in advance would be that we kind of have as close a consensus as we can get to two people. But, eh, we could, eh, if we get to a real problem, we can always narrow it down. And we can say, like, look, when we're having a problem getting to two, can we agree on this one? And then the other thing we could do, we can't enforce it necessarily, that we could ask that as soon as that person is seated, that because they didn't hear all the, the other people, that they were kind of recuse themselves to not be part of the process. We can't enforce it. If they want to vote, they can vote, but I think most people are pretty reasonable, and they, it's likely that they would not vote.
So we would have a nomination, take the vote on, on whoever more, whoever is nominated, one or more people. Vote on that person, that person would come up and, and be seated. And then ideally, they would abstain, but there's no, there'd be no requirement. But then we would also then go through another nomination process for the second person. So it wouldn't be so much of the general discussion like you were describing, Amanda, but more one, and then a second. Anybody else? I'm not, you know, married to any ideas here.
I think maybe we just see how it goes in the moment.
That's easy for you, no. I don't want to see how it goes. I'd like to have it really nailed down.
So like, definitely one and then two versus, I mean, because if what, I mean, if it's easy, and we just find two people that kind of rise to the top, and we pick those two people, and we agree, we can do it both at once. But if we don't have that, then we can always break it down and do one and one. That was my suggestion.
Well, Derek?
So just a thought on this, as opposed to doing interviews and having candidates step out, and this is kind of twofold reason as far as time and efficiency, have each candidate make a three to five minute statement of what they're looking to accomplish, and let the other candidates sit in the room and hear everyone and what they have to say, and then individually vote on, or make individual nominations. And whoever is voted up here first. You were voted based on what you had to say. You get to vote on the next one, too, is kind of my thought on that. I understand the apprehension of doing that, but, you know, I don't think necessarily we're gonna find a, a totally hundred percent fair way of doing this, no matter how we do it. And I think allowing, allowing everyone to hear what you have to say is, is part of the job description anyways. And if you want to piggyback off other people's ideas that you've heard before, or if you want to rebuke people's ideas afterward, I think that's just part of the process.
Uh, Jason?
Part of what folks could do, and I don't, I, I'm assuming we have the capability of this, is instead of people making the statements in the moment, it's really easy to make a three-minute recording of yourself, and this would also help us with the constraints of time. A three-minute, three to five minute statement recorded, and then we just play those for everybody here, and then everybody will have heard it. Everybody has a cell phone, and we won't be judging on quality of video, I'm sure.
How many applicants do we have right now? Nine. We're kind of talking about two different things here. One is the process of the potentially interviews, and how we're gonna garner the information from candidates, and then also the voting process. So I wonder if we could, you know, stick to one or the other.
Yeah, let's, let's decide the voting process first.
Okay.
I mean, that's number three on this list anyway, but let's just do that, and then start to talk about the other part.
Okay. Derek?
I would argue to say that you almost need to figure out the interview part first before you figure out how to vote on that.
Well, then let's go in the one, two, three order that's on here, because we started with three.
Sorry?
And so if we could just start at one, that would be great.
Okay, so set a timeline for interviews, ensure efficiency, eight, eight to ten applicants, could be ten minutes of time, or about an hour and a half. We're at nine now. And there are, and I have at least one of the applicants that can't make the meeting. So I think there's two elements here. One is, is they've, they fill out their online application. And then we're going to have them come in and speak for a set amount of time. Does, you have some sense of what, what that time might be? And, and in conjunction with that, I think, I'm not so sure that we can file this, we can do these, you know, one, two, three, because really, one affects the other in the sense that, are we gonna have questions? Are we gonna do that, you know, at the same time?
Well, can we just decide that we, that there's a maximum of ten minutes per? And just make a maximum time, and then go on to the next one, next thing here.
All right.
I'm suggesting we do a maximum of, of ten minutes per person.
Ten minutes per person, so that's our speaking time and the question time?
Everything.
Okay. Other comments on that idea?
I, I like ten minutes, that sounds good. We can always do less, I mean, if.
Well, that's a maximum of ten, so a lot of people will speak less.
Yeah, right, I like that. So it could go faster than that.
Right, yeah.
I like that.
So that's what, an hour and a half, a little better than that? One idea I was kicking around, and after talking with Martin, is perhaps presenting them with questions, written questions between now and that meeting. And so they would get those questions, and that, their answers were provided back to us in the May twenty-second packet. And then we will allow them to speak a few minutes. You'd already have the information from the packet. We let them speak for a few minutes, and then that would cut greatly, reduce the amount of time we need to commit within the meeting. Now, I, my thought was to use the questions from the observer. We've all answered those questions, they're very standardized. By using those questions, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be potentially injecting any bias. And again, it's the same questions that we had, we answered when, when we ran for office. Any interest in that? So basically, just so I'm clear, we'd send out the questions ahead of time, they would answer.
But wait a minute, you, you've suggested that, and we haven't discussed it at all, so let's discuss that. Can we do that?
Sure.
I kind of like that idea and it, with the, with the caveat that then we get to ask them about their answers to those questions in the conversation. Because what if, what if we have, it's not clear to us what they mean and you know me, I, there's a lot of times when things aren't clear to me and I need, I need to ask a follow-up to, so that I know that I understand what they're saying. So that would be my thought about giving them, giving them something written in advance.
Uh, I would just mention that, you know, we have just discussed this in the past, it's the danger of not asking everybody the same questions.
Right.
Okay.
When, I've been in interviews before, when we ask everybody the initial question and they answer, then we often ask follow-ups to their answer so that we understand what they are saying that's different from what somebody else is saying.
I see. Okay, anyone else? Derek?
I, personally, I like Phil's idea about using the questions from the observer. I understand what you're saying about clarification of their, their answers. Yeah, but I, to kind of Phil's point, without asking the same clarifying questions to each of the applicant, you get into that murky water of differential treatment, I would almost kind of take a, if there's an applicant with a lack of clarity to what they're saying as part of the interview itself. I personally, I don't think that we should be asking necessarily follow-up questions on some of their statements. You need to be clear with what you're.
I, I really, I really disagree. I strongly disagree.
I can understand and I can understand your point too.
Having interviewed a lot of people for, for jobs, having standard questions initially, asking follow-up questions on a standard question that's specific to you versus Jason versus me, you know, on the answer that's given.
I, I, I understand that, but are you going to ask that same clarifying question of each of the candidates?
Not if it's not something that needs to be clarified for somebody else.
That kind of gets to Phil's point of differential treatment, then are we asking this person?
Is it an interview? An interview goes different ways for different people.
So clarifying questions are different. To me, clarifying questions are something you can always ask, you know, oh, could you expand a little more on that or whatever? Those kinds of things are just very basic and less of an issue for me. Those, we can ask that of people during public agenda pieces when we're not even supposed to respond. You can always ask for clarification or a little more information and that's perfectly acceptable and you don't have to ask it of every person. Okay, so clarifying questions, yes.
That's not what I'm hearing.
But, but, but follow-up questions like, oh, you know, tell me another time when something like this happened, that's different. So to me, clarifying questions are fine for people.
And I tend to agree of what did you mean by X when you wrote X?
Yes, exactly.
Is more of, it, it, it walks that gray line and I understand it's between the two, but can you give me a perspective of what you think about? Go ahead.
I, I, I just feel that at some point during this process, we're going to end up walking this tightrope.
Yep.
Where someone at the, at the end is going to have.
Yeah, it is.
And that's, if you are comfortable doing that, then that's.
I think that's what we signed up for.
I'm flexible, but that's.
I'm really, again, I, I feel pretty strongly about not asking any additional questions. And again, what may be, uh, to you, a clarifying question may very well sound like you're finding out if this person has a particular position on one thing or another and that's going to determine how you may vote. You know, Derek kind of alluded to it, it's a fine line and I'm afraid that, I, I don't really see any way that, if we don't do it exactly standardized, that the potential is there later for someone to say, so-and-so asked this question because they wanted this person to vote this way on this matter and they felt that person would be there. If we just do either the observer questions or questions that we come up with ourselves, we don't have to worry about that potential bias or appearance of bias.
And, and I will say, arguing the other side, I'm good at doing both, um, is.
You'll fit in well here.
Determining what is a clarifying question and spending the time on agreeing what is a clarifying question could make the process horribly cumbersome and I, I, I see that as well.
I'm looking for the observer questions.
I happen to have them right here.
You have enough for all of us?
I do.
Awesome.
Wow, alright.
Be prepared.
Maybe we can read those out loud for people in the audience here. Do you know, I should pass them.
I have. Quite a few. Anyone who wants? I better keep one. And I, uh, I did speak to the editor and got his okay to do this tonight as well as potentially use them.
So can I?
Please.
Um, I, there's a couple on here that I would probably not agree with. They're asking about specific projects and things like the two forty-nine, two sixty-seven Main Street one and the one after, well, yeah, the one after that, those, you know, how do you address budget shortfalls? I'm not sure about those, I mean, we can talk about that, but, um, I'm, when I'm looking for a trustee, this is just me, I'm going to just tell you the things that I like to look for are, are people that have emotional maturity, people who could recognize a conflict of interest, you know? Uh, people who are going to be good stewards of, of the village money and, and projects and making good decisions, those kinds of things. I'm not interested in finding out how people would vote on a certain project or what they, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm looking for some broader characteristics. So, uh, I, I would want maybe a question about, you know, tell me a time when you've had a conflict with someone and how you resolved that. Or tell me, uh, you know, how you'd recognize a conflict of interest. Or, you know, are you willing to go through training to learn how to be a good trustee? Have you ever served on boards before? Like, those types of questions to me are more important than like, what are the top three things facing the village? Cause they'll learn those quick enough when they're on the board, you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I'm looking for different feedback, different questions.
Carly?
Oh, go ahead.
Derek?
No, I'd just echo some of Amanda's comments, I think that, that the question about two forty-nine, two sixty-seven North Main Street should disappear from this. To Amanda's point, I think trying to find out where people are going to vote on certain projects is probably a bit premature. And yeah, Amanda kind of hit the nail right on the head, it's all about kind of what you believe the person should be running for office for. I mean, I've always, integrity and transparency in local government, I've said that a hundred times in the last couple of years and stand by it and I agree, there needs to be a certain level of emotional maturity to be up here to realize, even though you may disagree with some people on some topics, that I got nothing against you. So I, I would agree that, that question should probably be removed. The budget shortfall, yeah, I, I'm walking the tightrope on that one a little bit, but I'd be interested to hear new ideas.
Carly?
Yeah, I, I agree on the two forty-nine, two sixty-seven striking that and I think maybe we could word the, the budget shortfall one a little differently, just about, you know, what are some, what are your thoughts about how to handle budget constraints or something like that? Um, I would like to add, um, the, the village board, the village's new DEI statement on here and have the person respond to it with something like, um, what do you see as things that the village board could do to support, I don't know, supports not, amplify and support this vision for our village? Because I, I, I think it speaks to our commitment and to the commitment of board members to not undermine that.
I have two, right, but you guys figured this out.
It'll be done when you're back.
Good.
I, I have, I, I concur with the statements here, just want to say that for the record. So, so are we saying where it'd be? Questions one, two, three, eliminate bullet four, kind of fuzzy on five. So we need to come to it, cause, but dealing with budgets is a big part of the job.
Mm-hmm.
No matter what. I don't know how we can do what's, we can say what sets you apart, but not what sets you apart from your opponents, because you don't know who that is. It's, this is different than running for office election. And then something about how do you deal with conflict, dealing with conflict of interest, much like the, uh, the progressives. What's that?
Voter Forum?
The Voter Forum, yes, that, that question, we could probably input that question.
Yeah, I like that one. Yeah, I don't like the what sets you part, even just by itself, I mean, you would hope that people in their answer, that means trying for us to determine.
I would be good with dropping that one.
Yeah, otherwise we're just going to have a ton of questions here.
What do you think about the inclusion of the DEI statement and fostering that?
I think we want someone who's on board with that.
I have to play devil's advocate because I'm totally in support of the DEI committee and everything they do, but at that point.
It's not just the committee, it's a statement of our village.
No, and I understand that too.
We're not done yet, Phil, you gotta come back out.
Just let me know.
I guess my concern, does that go more toward policy like two forty-nine, two sixty-seven North Main Street and?
I don't see it that way.
May not necessarily see it that way, others may. And I, I'm not, I'm not, I won't say that I'm not supportive of it, I just want to throw it out there as, if we're striking this question for, as far as village initiatives that you're in support of, I'd be a little leery of adding another question about a village initiative being the DEI committee, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to correct you again, Derek, it's not the DEI committee. This board accepted a statement on the part of our village that says this village. So it's not the DEI committee over here thinks we should be doing these things, it's a statement that says we as a village believe this and want this for our village, so I think it is fundamental to who we are.
Uh, let me just suggest, and I need to do a better job of directing here, so, uh, it sounds like we're in general agreement to use the observer question, is that accurate?
We struck the.
Well, Oregon strike, yes, and I agree with that.
And, and the last one as well, the opponent one.
Oh, yes, right, okay.
We're on the fence about the fifth bullet.
For some reason I missed that, I'm not sure why, anyway.
The fifth one, yeah, we're fuzzy on the fifth bullet point, this budget thing.
Yeah, so how, how would we reword that then?
And do we need to ask about that? Because someone who hasn't been through the process and seen the whole budget, that's a really difficult question to answer.
Well, uh, bear in mind, uh, these are questions that went to candidates for office, not sitting board members. And that's, I think that's, you know, uh, they can answer that as briefly or as, as much as I don't really know yet. Uh, but, but again, I think to streamline the process, I agree a hundred percent with taking out the North Main and taking out the part about the opponents, but other than that, I think, again, since these were the questions that were used for candidates for this and actually many preceding elections.
What if it, what if that budget one said, uh, how might the village board address budget shortfalls in the future? And because we've already, we've already dealt with this, this budget shortfall.
What ideas do you have for addressing budget shortfalls?
What are we going to go with?
Something general.
They're, they're basically the same question.
Alright, so why don't you repeat that for Candy?
I said how.
You got it?
Yeah, please.
I said, I heard what ideas do you have to address the budget shortfalls in the future?
I'd leave that out.
Yeah.
Any budget?
Yeah, maybe for a department or for the whole village or, you know, like what ideas?
I think, you know, it gets the idea across. Okay, so, uh, so we are in general agreement on, on the question, using these questions and these particular questions.
We, we, we did add one that it was, and I think I'm remembering it, how would you identify and deal with the conflict of interest? Is.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think that's how that was worded.
Excuse my absence.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
So is that, do you change the way you make and then you want?
Yeah, I've got another one too, so.
I would really like a question.
I'd like to suggest that I, I'd like, I agree with Derek's points about putting that specific thing. And again, I'd like to focus on what candidates were presented with. Would you be okay with just including that statement along with these questions without asking them to comment on it?
Well, I feel pretty strongly about this one. So I, you know, I mean, I, I don't want to hold up the process. On the other hand, I do feel like if we are going to commit ourselves and we said we were and we adopted a statement that part of doing that is putting things into pro, into practice. It's not sitting it over here as something that's written on paper, it's putting it into practice. And part of that is actually saying to people, what are your thoughts on this?
Okay, so, uh, if we were to put that in there, would that be the question that, that you would want in there? What are your thoughts on this?
My, mine would be more about how, what ideas, what thoughts do you have about how the village can support this, this vision for our community?
Everyone else comfortable with that? I am as well, so we'll include that with that question.
Get that, Candy?
Um, okay. I just said I have, what ideas or thoughts do you have to support the DEI committee's statement?
No, it's not the DEI committee's statement, it's our village's statement.
The thing I had it written when you first stated it, Carly, was we would add the statement to the questionnaire and then we would ask, how could the village amplify and support this statement?
All good?
Yeah, I, I think we, we do have to identify it in, as this is the village's statement on diversity, equity and inclusion, not the committee's statement.
Yeah. Okay, everybody good?
Yeah.
Please, Amanda.
Oh, you mean good on that or another question?
No. No, I'm just trying to get through, uh, yeah, you have another question?
I have another question.
You want to add or?
Yes, I, well, I, I, so this is from the Oregon Cares Committee and I said I would bring it forward at the, uh, the board here and we could discuss it.
Me?
There we go. So, one of the questions that they were suggesting is, and I apologize, I don't have copies here, but I'll read it so you get the gist of it. A role of village government is to oversee, update and create ordinances that regulate life in our community. For example, we have an ordinance that establishes a curfew for youth. We also have licenses that regulate alcohol, alcohol sales to minors. Are ordinances like these important to a community, why or why not? That was sort of a draft statement that they came up with. But again, this might be a specific thing. I don't know, what are your thoughts?
Me? I'd like to stick with the observer questions, but what, what do anyone else think? Derek?
I'd say I don't mind seeing that question added, um, just based on the fact that I, I for one am a believer that if things should be able to be put in writing for it to have meaning behind it, so I think asking them their views on village ordinances is, I don't think, I don't see any necessary downside to it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't see any downside and I also think it's, it's kind of what we do, so.
Yeah.
It seems like that's what we do, so, I don't know. A little, little redundant.
I, I don't have a strong feeling in favor or against, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, just put it in?
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody else? Okay, so I think we're generally. Okay, so I think we're generally in agreement, we'll use the observer questions, we'll send them out ahead of time. We'll ask them to get them back to, uh, Candy before the packet goes out for the May twenty-second meeting. Everyone will have a chance to read those. Okay, next step is, we have, um, people coming into the meetings, and we're gonna allow them a certain amount of time to speak.
I think we could do that less than ten minutes, if we're already have.
Are we gonna do just the questions and no clarification questions? Just let them speak, and then we vote, or we, you know, go through the process? I am not comfortable with clarifying questions, as I had outlined before, I'm going to.
I, I, I'm leaning towards with the amount of information we have and the amount of clarifying questions that could come up out of that to just not doing them. Um, it could extend the process, uh, quite a bit, and, um, I, I think folks will need to do their best to, um, convey their meeting, both in writing and out loud, um, which is what we have to do here.
So, so this actually doesn't feel like an interview to me. I mean, we're giving them a questionnaire, they're answering, we're reading their answers, they're gonna make a statement, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have a discussion and make a decision. So we're not really interviewing them.
No.
So I just wanna put that out there for the record. This is not a candidate interview for.
Right.
It's a, something else. Yeah, it's a, there you go, thanks Derek.
We can rephrase this.
So, yeah, and, and that, I think it's an important point, is that we indicate that we're really not gonna do an interviewing process. We're gonna have the applicants speak, well, we're going to have them submit answers to questions, and we're gonna have them come in and speak at a set period of time, which we will know down in a second, then the board will proceed with nominating and voting. Oh, it all, we all on the same page on that?
Works for me.
Okay, so now all we need to do then is, now that we're not going to, uh, ask clarifying questions, then we wanna decide on how long we'll allow them to speak. And initially you proposed ten minutes, I don't think anybody.
That's when we were gonna be interviewing, yeah.
So, three, five, uh, you know, we've got nine, nine people, and we have another week, we could get more. So do, you know, do the math.
Well, this is important, I mean, if it's.
It is important.
I guess I'm less concerned about how long we're here to do it than that we do a good job at it, so.
Yeah.
I totally agree with what Carleen just said. However, I think a three to five minute opening statement for most people is enough.
Yeah, I would say five max.
So, uh, up to five minutes, how about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then, um, uh, Amanda, do you?
Yeah, well, one, one of the things we, we didn't talk about, Derek said that, uh, and, you know, having everybody, allowing people to be in the room. Um, I'm still not comfortable with that. I really think we should call people in one at a time, uh, and not allow people to piggyback off other people's answers. Uh, I feel pretty strongly about that, so.
Carleen?
Yeah, I kinda feel that way too. It, it just does, that, it doesn't seem fair to the person who goes first.
Yeah. I, I don't oppose that, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think it's, you know, tremendously important either way, but it's been past practice and, uh, I can see it in certain situations are being merit, because someone might just decide to attack the previous speaker, and we don't wanna go down that road. Okay, so agreed out, they'll be out of the room, we'll brought him, bring him in one at a time. Okay, they've all spoke, now it's back to us. Do we go strict and write the nominations then? That's my suggestion, but, no.
I mean, again, we wanna be positive in our comments, because people will be in the room, so we're not, we, we would have to, you could posit, you could say, I like so-and-so because whatever, but we're just.
I think we can say I have a concern about.
Sure, sure.
I don't think that we should say things that we don't mean. It doesn't mean that we have to be ugly about what we say we have a concern about, but I, if somebody nominated someone that I felt pretty strongly about, I would need to say, well, I have a concern about blah, blah, blah.
Or you could just not vote for them.
Unless I feel really strongly, and I think it's not a good idea, and then I think people should know, and I would wanna know if anybody else here had that same thing. I don't think it's just, should be limited to me having concerns, you know, I mean, I want us to be thoughtful.
Derek?
I think we should allow for nominations at any point, but I think they need to be discussed and voted on before the voting. I, I, I think Carleen's right, if you, and I totally agree with what Amanda's saying there. I'm not gonna, I mean, personally, I wouldn't say anything to a person sitting out there that I wouldn't say to your face in general, so.
Yeah.
Um, as long as we're kinda sticking to that practice, I think we'll probably be okay.
Alright, um, and then, um, so at any point during that discussion, someone can nominate somebody, is that the way you guys understand it? Okay, good. And then are we going to vote until we have two people, or maybe, maybe we fail because no one supports two people, or even one? But, uh, do we, do we vote until we have two seats filled, or we do one at a time? Derek?
I, just for ease of doing it, I would say do it one at a time, because if, say, Carleen nominates two people, I agree with one of them, but not the other one, I'm probably gonna vote no, just based on the one that I don't agree with, so.
Yep. And I will say, um, because they'll be seated right away, we, we, I think it's okay to ask, would you be willing, once they're voted, voted on? But, uh, trying to do two at a time, even though I like the idea, um, I think we'd be here for a very long time.
Okay, so I think we've covered every step, everyone's comfortable with that? So, go ahead.
Can we get Candy to read back to us what we're doing?
Alright, so I have seven interview questions, that'll be on a questionnaire, sent ahead of time, and questionnaires will be due back to Candy by packet deadline. Seven questions are, why are you running for office? What makes you qualified to serve on the Oregon Village Board? What is the most pressing issue the Village of Oregon faces in the next few years? What ideas do you have to address any budget shortfalls? How would you identify and respond to a conflict of interest? Uh, we would add the DEI statement, and then ask, what ideas do you have to amplify and support this statement? And then the question that Amanda, uh, provided, which we have in writing there.
So I have two things on those. Instead of running for office, applying for, for this office, since they're not running for it. And then on the DEI statement, support and amplify this vision for our community.
Okay.
All good?
So then I have five minute presentation max for all the candidates or applicants. And then we would ask people to leave the room for each presentation, and until they're, if they're done with their presentation, they can stay. And then, uh, we move on to nomination votes, and then, uh, we would take them one at a time, it sounds like.
So for my notes, match mark.
Alright.
Can I make one more suggestion?
Yep.
Uh, when we take the applicants, can we do like a random number pick or lottery or something, so, so we're not going alphabetical, or just, let's do a random, uh, order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Come out of a hat like we do for the.
There you go.
Like Candy does for roll call votes, I'm never first.
Yes, like a ballot round.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's do a motion just to, uh, approve the process as just outlined by, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you all very much. Item nine, new business items for discussion of possible action. Proposal to designate Village Clerk Candy Jones as interim village administrator during the lead period and providing compensation as step one of grade twenty-three in the adopted twenty, twenty-three Wade schedule between May twenty-eighth and July eighth. Recommendation as motion to approve as presented. Derek?
Just making the motion.
Okay, and Amanda? Discussion.
Think Candy will do great.
Good luck Candy.
Yeah, thanks for stepping up.
Meetings are canceled in June.
Okay. I was on the fence, but now I'm voting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Uh, nine B, determine dates for July, June, and July village board meetings. And I think there was, uh, packets and suggested dates.
Uh, the Tuesday, June twentieth date?
Yep.
We're picking that instead of kicking it back a week, cause you're gonna be gone, was that the thought, or?
Uh, I think the thought there was, well, there's actually twofold, so one thought was trying to keep them every other as best as we could to avoid any gaps. But, um, I know that for that meeting, we're targeting to have the, um, auditors here to present the, the twenty-twenty-two audit. And that was just one day that happened to work for them, but not the following week. Um, so that's what we're, we're proposing there. If, if that doesn't work for the board, we can certainly try to rearrange things, it's not a big deal.
It wasn't, it wasn't cause I couldn't make it, it's just, it, I think people expect village board member meetings on Monday nights, and I just don't wanna throw people off. Uh, not having it on a Monday night, having it on Tuesday. We do that with our reorganizational meeting, but, um, I just, that was my only concern.
Uh, can you use a motion on this, or, uh, suggest a change? Derek?
A move to approve as presented.
Jason, further discussion? Hearing on all, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item C, consider six thousand donation to Latino Academy of Workforce Development in Madison for free entry, local driving training, and commercial driver's license, provided developed staff. Someone have a comment on this, please, Lauren?
I can explain a little bit, although, um, probably not as well as is written down in the memo. Just briefly, all of our public works staff, um, are required to hold CDL class B licenses, so they can operate, um, our large vehicles, including probably most notably our snowplow vehicles. And in the past, uh, getting those licenses has been relatively simple and straightforward. Unfortunately for us, although probably fortunately for those sharing the road with them, in twenty-twenty, uh, the federal government instituted some pretty strict standards to get those licenses. Um, instead of just kind of taking a test, they now get their permits, but then they attend, um, I believe it is twen, forty hours of theory class training, forty hours of range drive training, and then forty hours of on-the-road, behind-the-wheel training. And then they are tested to get those licenses. So, we have two relatively new employees, one is with the water utility, that's Katie Woodson, and one is with the sewer utility, and that is JD Dunphy, um, who do not have class B CDLs and need to be trained. They are the first that we've had in this situation, and so when we decided we wanted to pursue this, we started looking into options, and quickly found that every municipality in our area is struggling to get this training, because the guidelines are so new that a lot of companies haven't set up the training yet, and there really aren't that many options. Those that do exist are very expensive, and they're far away. We got lucky that we found that the Latino Academy of Workforce Development in Madison actually offered this training, and has been doing so for several years. And they were further along in their program than any other local groups, and they offered it for free, and they were planning on doing it several times this spring. And so we have worked with them to get our two employees into training. JD is attending the morning session starting today through the end of June, and Katie is attending their afternoon session, also starting today through the end of June. Now, the Latino Academy is dedicated to essentially serving an underserved population in this area, um, by providing free workforce, um, preparation training to applicants. And as of right now, they are still offering the CDL training for free as well. This is their pilot year, they will be going to a payment model next year, especially for groups such as us. But their group frankly is doing really good work, and it's work that is not paralleled in this area. And so to support their mission and moving towards that kind of very structured CDL training program, staff is recommending that we pay what is frankly on the low end of what we would typically pay for training like this. Three thousand dollars per the employee that we're sending, um, partly because we feel it's the right thing to do, and partly because doing so, we hope, will establish a good relationship with a group that is turning out really qualified candidates. They're already working with Dane County quite a bit, as well as with the city of Madison and the city of Fitchburg. Um, and from what I've been able to tell, those partnerships have been really successful. So that's kind of an explanation behind it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. No, Derek?
Move to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Carleen, do you have something?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna, gonna add, as someone who has a, had a CDL class A license for a while, this is a bargain. I mean, um, I took my classes for two weeks back in nineteen ninety-five, and paid just shy of five thousand dollars for that training. So, um, yeah, I totally support the, you know, making these donations, I think it'd be great.
I'd just like to throw out kudos to the staff for finding it as well.
Yeah.
It's, I really wanna just give credit, thank you Derek for making that comment. I wanna give credit to Don Gray and Peggy Hag, who have both been instrumental in this, as well as JD and Katie for going through all of these hoops to try to get this and learn on the fly, cause we didn't know anything about it. And just as a fun fact, once JD and Katie finish, the only public works employee without a class B CDL is me. And that's gonna stay that way, for the safety of everyone.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing on all, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine D, future agenda items. Derek?
I'd just like for a future agenda follow-up on the mailing correction for the special assessment earlier, earlier, and if Lisa had any thoughts to add on the changes from the, uh, three-year to the five-year on there, just to make sure it didn't, you know, just to make sure that the public knows that the corrections have been made.
Anybody else?
Um, I have a future, I think something that will come out of my village board comments, it will be a future agenda item, so should I say I'm now, or in the future agenda item? I mean, in the village comment.
Well, you should probably do it in the future agenda items.
Okay. So, um, the, the joint finance committee took out of, out of the, the, the legislature's joint finance committee took out of the state budget the shared revenue plan that had been proposed by the governor, and have put it forth as a separate bill. They did that very purposefully, because they wanted to add a lot of strings to it that would impact, uh, local governments. We all got a memo from, from, um, Martin earlier in the week. Many of them, several of them are very concerning. Uh, two in particular that I find really concerning are, um, here, I, I have it here somewhere, here it is. Um, is the, um, the provision that requires police departments to issue basically the same number or more, and, and fire NMS, the same number or more, um, tickets and other things, arrests, et cetera, as they have in past years. And the other one is the, um, provision that prohibits local governments from holding advisory referendums. Um, those two are the ones that I have the most trouble with. Um, and they were ta, this was taken out of the budget so that the governor couldn't use his line on veto to, to scratch those things, because they wanted to add them in. Um, so, you know, there, there's not anything in the part about law enforcement that would, that would allocate monies for prevention kinds of things, and, you know, I, I would, I would defer to Chief Paganoff that we, we're. And, you know, I I would I would defer to Chief Pagan cough that we're concerned when numbers are going up. We don't want, I mean, we would prefer prevention, and this doesn't do anything for that. Also, there's a element of local control that's being taken away and from local governments about being able to regulate mines. And also the the part about local governments not being able to discriminate against or provide preference for companies or, you know, people that we might contract with because they're a woman owned company or a BIPOC owned company or something else. So I would like for us as a board to entertain a resolution to ask that the state legislature not put in a lot of strings for what should be revenue that we are getting without all of all of these strings. And so I'm suggesting that for a future agenda, so the next meeting, that we, and I would work on this, that we look at passing a resolution saying to the state legislature, just give us the shared revenue that we need, the way the governor was going to do it, and quit trying to hold us hostage to the things that you want. You're taking away local control and impact and and demanding things from us that should not be part of that package.
Okay.
I don't have any strong feelings about this at all.
Thanks for clarifying. So without objection, we'll add that to the future agenda? Anybody else for future agenda items? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Reports of village officers, village administrator report was in this packet.
Say, my vacation coming up. It's supposed to be here at the I'm supposed to be at the next village board meeting, but anything can happen, and it's pretty close to the due date.
Best wishes on that.
Yes, right. Village Department head staff or consultant comments?
Yeah, well, we are, is this on? We are moving this week, so that's it. We are closed at the village hall, obviously, this week. Hopefully, this will be our last meeting in this room, but I'm not going to promise that. But we'll we'll keep you updated and the public updated on on how that goes. But today was day one of moving in the rain, and we're moving forward. It's it's going to take a little while to settle into the new digs, but things are going well. This last Saturday, we had the first day of the two planned tree planting volunteer days, and we planted with with cooperation and actually direction from the Sierra Club in Dane County. We were able to plant 33 trees at combination of High Meadows Park and in the High Meadows Drive to Attention Basin area there, and then also the Thompson Park right behind Karate America and that area. This next Saturday is a very aggressive plan to try to plant 40 trees. We are seeking volunteers. We really need volunteers go out there. The holes have already been dug. We we dig the holes, we load the trees, and I'll be coming back with a really nice kind of thank you memo, some photos and everything. It really is neat to see, but if if you have time on Saturday to come out, it's it's a great event. It'll be from nine to probably 11:30 or noon at the Gary Dish Park, which is the brand new park that is off of Ridge View and Foxfield intersection there. It is a brand new park with zero trees out there, so we're going to be planting 40 trees, lots of neat varieties, and just kind of an exciting, exciting start for that area up there.
Thanks, Jeff. At least.
This was shared in your packet, page 465, but happy to share if you hadn't already heard that North Point's Lytech project, loan comp housing tax credit project, they did get those credits awarded by WIDA this year. So last year, they were not successful in getting those credits. They actually scored lower this year, but were awarded just based on how WIDA was doing their awarding in different categories. So those that project is in the Oregon Parks neighborhood, just north of Mulligan and the new Journey Above Daycare. So that'll be 60 units. It will actually be expanded to 70 units of 30 to 70% area median income, so a little bit lower than the population, the Lake Stone Prairie Brook apartment serve. It's a mixed use building, so some commercial space with the drive through on the first floor, as well as some first floor apartments and three story building there, and then about 12 town home units, three bedrooms for families. So really excited to move that forward. We'll be coming back to the board later in the summer with some TIF requests and more information, and then they'll be coming to the planning commission where you meet for our July meeting for their site plan, their S I P review.
Great.
And I just want to remind you all that this Friday between 11:00 and 1:00, you can come get your Brat fix at the Senior Center at the drive through Brat Bash. And if you have any pull at all with Mother Nature, just reminder not to rain and particularly storm. Friday. But anyway, thank you. All the proceeds are profits are to benefit the Senior Center. And again, a shout out to the Bill Supports Oregon program that provided us with a lot of funding for a long time, thanks to people in the community donating their receipts, and we are missing them. So we're hoping we can get some people through the Brat Fest.
Can I piggyback on that a little?
Sure.
Clarice, I see you back there. Send send me a flyer to put up at People's Garage Sales about the Brat Fest. Is there a way that other people could download those and post them at their garage sales? Do you have that on mine somewhere?
It's on Facebook.
On Facebook?
It's on, yes, on the village Facebook page and the Senior Center, the Council on Aging's Facebook page, I think, Senior Center's Facebook page.
Okay, so people could put that up? That would help, you know, them with fundraising while people are out garage sale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 10C, village board comments.
I already made them.
Everyone's done commenting tonight, I think. 11, announcements and miscellaneous business business. A proclamation declaring May 2023 as Fair Housing Month in the Village of Oregon.
It's up to you guys.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I'll just pass it on, and you can read your paragraph.
So do you start or do I?
No, no, you go ahead.
I can start?
Sure.
All right. Whereas the Village of Oregon recognizes the passage of the Fair Federal Fair Housing Act Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended and?
Whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family status, disability, or national origin and?
Whereas equal equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and village and?
Why don't you read two, since it is really short.
Sure. Whereas barriers which diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights of all citizens and?
Whereas the cooperation, commitment, and support of all the residents of the Village of Oregon is necessary to remove barriers to the enjoyment of living where one chooses within one's means.
Now, therefore, I, Phil Van Kampen, village president of the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the month of May in 2023 as Fair Housing Month and request and encourage every citizen in business of our community's support and endorse fair housing to reaffirm their commitment to fair housing for all and wholeheartedly recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year.
Yep.
Okay. Next one is proclamation from municipal clerks appreciation week.
Want to start here and go that way?
Sorry?
I said, why don't we start here and go that way?
Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead. Everyone's got it.
Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world as the oldest profession among public servants and?
Whereas the year 2023 marks the 54th Annual National Municipal Clerks Week initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States and?
Whereas the Village of Oregon's clerk department, Candy, Joy, Peggy, and Melissa provide the professional connections between the citizens, the governing bodies, and agencies at the local county and state levels and?
Sure, why not?
Whereas multiple municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all residents through transparency and accountable government practices. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration, to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, focus groups, and annual conferences across Wisconsin.
Now, therefore, I, Phil Van Kampen, village president of the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin, do proclaim April 30th through May 6th, 2023 as Municipal Clerk Week and further extends the sphere of appreciation to our village clerk Candy Jones, deputy clerk Joey Hanson and Peggy Hag, and administrative assistant Melissa Woodson, and to all municipal clerks for their exemplary dedication to the communities they present. Oh, please.
I just want to give a shout out to the staff in the village clerks department. Without them, I wouldn't be able to do what I do, and they're amazing, and I thank them for being a part of the team. So, thank you, Joy, Melissa, and Peggy.
Item 11C, upcoming meetings and events. Reports in the packet. Anything clarify or comments? Okay. And 12. Turn on, motion to adjourn. Jason? Derek? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.